Needing order, agenda review and disposition.
So just under discussion items, you can strike our table grant program assurances. We are expected that to come out with the state today, it's not here. The other piece is to strike the student report. Janet is going to cover that information in her principal's report.
Great, okay. Privilege of the floor. Welcome.
Thanks.
Welcome, welcome.
How are you guys?
Good. Everybody knows Amy, she's the chair of Plymouth Elementary School. Amy Lee. Do you know anybody here? Great. And Jason is filling in for Ted. Ted is our select board representative, but Scott and Kyla do a great job of communicating really well, so, but it's nice to have you for sure. Okay, approval of the minutes, March 18th. Did anyone have anything to change or add?
I'm not seeing. I will make the motion.
That motion by Paul. Seconded by Paul. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, no? Okay, great. Student report, they are absent. Janet's going to cover, principal's report, first.
Sure, thank you. As you arrived, you're seeing a lot of action in the parking lot and in the lobbies tonight. It's move up night, so we're about to welcome all of our incoming ninth graders and families. We're excited about tonight. I need to give some thanks to Tenille Trino. She has over the years sort of owned the organization of this night. And we really took our feedback from last year into consideration. I'm actually going to thank Amy, and you gave us some great feedback last year. Last year we had a speaker and this year for the parents, and this year we're going to have a panel format. Parents really want to put some names and faces, hear about all the programming and hear about all the academics and the offerings here at the high school, so we're really excited about that tonight. Interestingly enough, my second bullet to share with you is about seniors. So it's kind of the best of both worlds. This week, we welcomed our senior class trip home on Saturday evening. They spent the two nights and three days in New York City. They had a fabulous experience. They covered Times Square and a Broadway show and Chinatown and Little Italy. I was with many of them today as we took 33 scholar athletes to the Capital Center of the Arts for the scholar athlete recognition, and we had lunch. And so they've had a really exciting, like, kind of starting to come to the end of this experience in the last four days, and they were just really excited about the last few days that they've been together and kind of what's to come. So I'm really excited for them. I am going to advertise tonight for this group of parents, as I mentioned before, the Project Reboot. If you're interested in attending that, that's next Monday evening from 6:00 to 7:30. That is the young man who's coming to talk to our community about building healthy relationships with technology. So that's gone out to all of our middle schools, and it's going out to our high school, and certainly you're all welcome to join us. I do have some congratulations. You know, we continue to receive a lot of great feedback on our kids. So again, I mentioned the theater group is off to the state competition next weekend. And this week, Bryn Daigle, who's one of our seniors, I've mentioned her before, she put together the film in the winter Between Dreams. It was aired at the Flying Monkey. The poster, the artwork that promoted that show was just awarded, I'm going to just read it to you, Gold Key National Recognition, and she's going to receive honors at Carnegie Hall in June. So really amazing accolades for some of these kids as they're leaving us, so I just would be remiss not to share all of those exciting things with you. We celebrated a record-setting number at cultural arts night a couple Thursdays ago. Again, you know, just the community embraces that evening, and I can't thank the music, art, fine and performing arts, theater. We added theater this year, and between Tanya Orlando and I at the elementary school, we have a packed house. By the time the music starts, we can barely get everybody in the gym at 6 o'clock.
We had close to 2,000 people between Plymouth Elementary. It was unbelievable between both buildings.
Yeah. The weather helped, that was exciting. So that's always just, you know, continues to be a huge night, so, you know, thanks to all of those teachers. It's hard to believe that spring sports, but they actually have started on the calendar. Those athletes and coaches are being very patient with the fields. We are thankful to some of our local partners who offer some turf every now and then, and hopefully the water looks okay. But we hope to be on field. I did talk to Mr. Austin in a week, so hopefully that all goes well. Last time we were together, we talked about the overseas travel, and you looked at love to travel and the Primex insurance package, and we just wanted you to have some time to digest that. But Cecile Healy did hold her evening event, and she had a great turnout. She already has kids that are pre-registered with anticipation that that will be approved. I think she's at six right now, and she's hoping for 12. That would be one chaperone. So did you have any questions, given the information that we shared last time? And if not, I would love a motion on that.
To approve the trip.
To approve the trip.
I didn't know. I asked a question last time. I don't know if you're going to look into, I didn't expect you to be looking into it. That was for the kid who really liked it all, but just doesn't have the financial means. Are there any sources?
Yeah, so we talked about it a bit here. There would be some private sources that that student would need to seek, and we have, Cecile addressed fundraising during the meeting. And interestingly enough, the fundraising was a no, simply because it's really hard to guarantee that kids come and participate in fundraising. It's hard to divvy up fundraising equitably. It's hard to add another thing to some of these kids' needs that are interested in this. So I think that to answer your question, Phil, would be sort of on a kid-by-kid basis, we would support looking into some of those sources. Yes, but they certainly wouldn't exclude it. We would do our due diligence around it.
Any other questions? Someone would like to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to approve the trip?
Overseas trip?
Overseas trip next April.
In April, right, 2026. Great.
Great, second by Sheila. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions?
Additionally, Mr. Ed Kylie has continued the presidency class here at the high school that Mr. Parsons had taught, so he is looking for your approval to continue the DC trip. It is April 16 through the 18th. Right now, there's seven students attending and three chaperones, so he would just like your approval for that overnight trip.
Okay. You would like to make a motion? Sheila?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the overnight trip to DC. April 16 through the 18th.
Thank you. Seconded by Tony. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Great.
Great, and the last thing, students and the OSOPE Club have approached me with the idea of an early dismissal on the Friday before the long week. So they're asking for shortened classes in the morning. We have traditionally had an all-school cookout before that final Friday, before the April week, and then they would like to spend the last hour doing some games outside with a 115 dismissal.
A spring carnival?
Like spring fling.
Anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay.
We'll need approval on it.
Yeah, just approval on that. All right, so who would like to make that?
I'll make the motion. I'd like to approve spring.
Spring fling?
Free, spring fling.
Let's call it spring carnival.
Spring carnival.
For the rest of the world.
Okay, great. Seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Great.
That's it for me.
Okay. And then we have our committee meetings, April 15.
Yep.
Coming up. That, we'll stick with committee meetings too, that won't be operated to a full board?
Yeah, committee meetings is fine.
Okay. Discussion items, nominations, that'll be in.
So we'll do nominations in non-public. I would like to ask the board, given the competitiveness with some of the positions and contracts coming out in other districts around April 15th, that I have the authority to move on hiring and then doing the official nomination at the next board meeting. A month can be a long time between April and May when I'm trying to scoop up some teachers, so.
I think you've done that before.
You've done that before, you've allowed me to do it this summer, but I appreciate it. I just need consensus, if any of it has, you're okay with that.
And you reach out to me sometimes and...
And I'll reach out to you, yep, with any of that, so I just want to...
Sound good, everyone?
Pick up the good ones.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Great. Budget review, Dan.
Good evening. Kyle, would you like to make that?
Oh. Well, we're getting close to the end of the year, so I don't like to, in May and June, pitch you with where we're at with the budget. So each, in April, May and June, we'll look at the budget each time of where we're at and how we're looking. Typically, this couples with some of the facility stuff. I think at summer retreat, we may want to reorganize maybe how we do that, and not just depending on end-of-year funds to kind of address some of the things. So maybe this year we do that, but maybe a capital reserve fund or something, we could do all that through retreat. But for tonight's purposes, I just wanted Dan to plant the seed of where we were as far as budget, how we're looking, and then, you know, just some of the options, especially for some of the new members as we move into May, June, as far as what we do with retained funds and then unreserved funds. So just a brief overview.
Okay, so technically, at this point, we're three-quarters of the way through fiscal year as of today. Looking at our budgets, they, we have approximately $2.27 million that's unencumbered at this point in time and unspent. In evaluating that number, I see approximately $570,000 that hasn't been encumbered, but certain expenses that are going to come through, things like spring coaching stipends, things like computers for next year, which typically involves the spring, things like that, which would take us down to about $1.7 million at this point, three-quarters of the way through the year. Last year, at the end of the fiscal year, you devoted to retain the maximum amount available from prior year's budget, that number was $328,437. You also committed a portion of that to be revenue next fall to reduce the tax impact of next year's budget. So the net number, going into next year, you'll have approximately $150,000 still in your retained balance with a capacity of $345,000. So whatever's left over at the end of this year, you could retain an additional $194,000. In sum, what that means to me is that there's about $1.5 billion in flexibility in this year's budget, assuming you were to retain the most amount that you could going into next year. And that money would either be used for additionally speculative, we have to encumber debt that are known, which is purchasers have been entered, or...
Unanticipated.
Unanticipated capital projects or repair maintenance, things like that.
For special ed?
Yeah. And special ed is one of the major savings so far this year for students in the building who may have been originally planning to be outside the building and other programs. That's where the largest variances are right now in this year's operating budget savings. Any questions about that?
Okay. At the last meeting, I think you mentioned something about an issue with drainage?
Yeah, so that, it brings us right into the next conversation.
That's what you wanted me to do, right?
Yeah. Segue into the next conversation.
But with Dan saying what he said, and we've got, you're going to have to deal with that issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But just to back up, so let's just back up for a second before we segue into that. Dan, special ed, so money's in Kyla, money's we, in Janet, we had to put in the budget that we're going to save on, and it's tricky to put too much against the tax rate just for that pendulum swing. You want to explain that a little bit, that I think's so important to talk about?
Sure. So any funds that are not spent this year or encumbered for known emergency services are, become revenue in the fall, become expression as top public, returns to the towns, returns to the communities. Money doesn't actually go back, but it's because of the cash left over at the end of the year, it's considered what the tax rate is set this coming fall.
You know, percent, you know, 1% or something like that, bringing it down to 1%. But it doesn't really work that way, but in my brain, it does work that way. But that would be a goal of the board to look at, to see if we can, our increase was 1.8 at the end of the day, I believe?
Yeah, and then some things we've looked at too, is like the increase and then, you know, the cost of the support staff agreement. So sometimes we take that cost and say, okay, let's give that back because it's a wash as far as the increase just in the CBA for year one, so it...
Which is outside of the 1.8, just to clarify that.
Correct. That is on top of it, that the voters approve.
That was a separate argument.
So it's just as far as tactics, as far as how to get it down, you don't want to swing and get some of the things we need that has been an issue this year, facilities-wise. But it's something to talk about, I think, at retreat too, of how we can strategize, especially with some of the bills that are coming down from state level possibly, that could have significant unknown costs to us, and how we can maybe strategize for some of the bills that may go through around health insurance, continuous lack of funding for special education, or for some of the other unfunded mandates that are kind of coming through around public schools. So it's just something to keep in mind, just, you know, having some savings accounts for having some...
I think, I would recommend that in your retreat this year, you consider the notion of, you have very little capital reserve accounts or expendable trust funds here. Some of the schools, some of the smaller schools in the S.A.U. have much larger, and when they have these projects come through, that, there's a fixed amount that goes into a capital reserve account every year when you have an expenditure, put it on the warrant form, in some cases, the board can name the agents of expendable trust fund. If you established new trust funds or expendable trust funds, if you were the agents for it, you could take significantly a portion of any money left over, if there is money left over at any given year, and put it in those trust funds rather than forcing it into an emergency repair or account or into a return fund balance account.
Just a thought.
But that needs to be voted on at the district, well, not the district meeting, but on the warrant, you'd have to put an article to that effect with it, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some portion of it, yeah.
But all those articles, especially when you have deposits for fund balance, you can include the language that they don't raise taxes, it's just from existing revenue. I have never seen a case where one of those articles fail, and it becomes a more transparent way of savings for these emergency events.
Dan, three, four, five years ago, the law was changed to, it sets a limit as to how much money you can set aside, carry over, if you will, for lack of a better term. And that figure you mentioned?
Yeah.
And I think we've maxed that, haven't we? So we'll take as much as we can?
So I'll take one step at a time. When the retained fund balance authorization was first established, it was a 2.5%, and then it was increased to 5%. And the, yes, this board has voted the last couple of years to retain the maximum amount available, it wasn't always the full amount, last year it was. But again, once you commit during the budget process to release a portion of that to be certain revenue this fall, as you did this year, you voted to commit $178,000 of the $328,000 that had been retained last year, so that account balances down to 150. So a portion of money left over this year could be, could replenish, if you will, that retained fund account.
One more question. Is it easier either through an expendable trust or this fund that you just mentioned to access the money?
So there's, so if it's in the retained fund balance, it's very easy to access. All that has to happen is a hearing by the board. If it's in a expendable trust or a capital reserve, in a, a capital reserve is more difficult because, it's the most difficult because it has to be voted on to be withdrawn by the voters. An expendable trust, the board, again, can have a hearing and expend it. The good news is that an expendable trust doesn't have the limit on it in terms of the total dollars that can be in it, like the retained fund balance does.
Ready for the next?
Yep, anyone have any questions? Are you all good?
So there's a few pieces that I would like to ask for your approval tonight, one being the drainage that we've been having an issue with in the locker room for the entire year, really, as far as putting a Band-Aid over it. So do you want to review?
Yeah, so in February, I let you know that Raul's had come in, they had done some, we had been doing some preventative work, trying to just keep it moving, and then Eastern Pipe came in with cameras over the February break. And really, what we learned out of both of those diagnostic times is that there's two spots in the locker room drains where it needs to be relined. So the recommendation, and obviously this is coming from Mark, the facilities manager, is to reline the drains, abate the floor where we go in at the pits location, and restore those two sections of flooring. And so to do that project in total, it would be $97,462.
So that's, that's the first piece?
That's the first project that we would, and we've been monitoring that. Like, I inherited the locker room, they had been, they had been already, you know, trying to do some preventative work down there. But really, now we know the problem, and we know where to fix it and how to fix it, so it's just a matter of your approval with that. The second project is the fire panel. So I believe we talked about the fire panel. So the fire panel was installed in 1991. So really, what you're more at risk of is end-of-life for replacement parts. The fire panel is still intact, but it's when things don't go well, we could not be able to replace the parts. So to replace that whole unit and get it up to code and make sure everything is where we need it to be, the cost would be $170,000. And then the third is, previously, we had talked about some re, what they're trying to do is get the electrical panels and the boards to sort of be re-navigated and make a little bit more sense in terms of location in the building. So we already bought the electrical boards. What we need approved is labor and installation. And so labor and installation of what we've already purchased is $18,200. So those three projects are sort of ones that...
A priority.
A priority, and really can interrupt the building if something doesn't go well in terms of replacement of, replacement of parts and end-of-year systems.
The other major project that we're not asking for approval tonight is the AC1, AC3 that we've continuously talked about. This, it's not all air conditioning, it's a heating system and the infrastructure in that piece.
Yeah, yeah.
You approved the design cost already, so we're still, they're still doing the design work, so I'm hoping to have that costed out to maybe get some of that done this summer. But that would be a May meeting. Hopefully, they will be getting the cost.
Yeah, and I met with Mark today, it's really, we would prioritize AC3, because AC3 is really what takes care of the third floor HVAC, and right now, we have replaced a shaft in order to, for that unit to continue to work. But again, you know, we had to get a custom shaft built because the shaft to replace that unit no longer exists. So you're kind of running into, you might, you're fixing a, something with, you know, we just might as well replace it. It's just that, those costs are going to continue to happen until we replace it with a new unit. So AC3 would be that priority.
And we've been lucky with the ESR funds to do...
Correct. Right.
A million six? What was that ESR fund? Do we even know the grand total of it?
Oh, it was way more than that.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we got a lot of it done with that.
So we've been super fortunate to not have to...
We got a lot of the HVAC systems done with that, with that money over, ESR 1, 2 and 3.
Okay. Which was again, not from a local level, from a federal level? Just to remind.
Yes, that was one time.
So I hope to have AC3, some preliminary costs and budget line numbers in May for you.
Okay, so the three, the three components tonight, $18,170...
So the reline the drains, abate and restore the floor is $97,462. The fire panel replacement and installation is 170, and the electrical panel board labor and installation is $18,200.
For a grand total of? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Questions for Kyla and Jen Paul?
The electrical panel, is that just the panel itself, or are they doing some of the sensors and everything else that go with it?
Everything else that goes with it. But they've already, we've already bought those.
They're doing each room individually in the hallways and...
Yeah.
The panel was updated, it hasn't been the same since '91. It was updated.
The, no, no, the fire panel, is that what you...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was updated, I was here.
Okay.
Is there a warranty with the work that'll be done with the drain in the locker room? How long can we anticipate that repair lasting?
Yeah, I'd have to ask about that. I don't have that number, but I'll ask for you. Yeah.
And I'm assuming it's taking care of the entire boys' and girls' locker room?
Yes, yes.
And do we, is it weather, like, do we know what happened? Is it just a shelf life on the lining that wears out at a certain time?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So all original pipe?
It was, it was a number that was built into the original locker room renovation when we sort of didn't move on that.
1890, whatever building opened?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a little rugged.
It was when I was here.
Yes. Sheila knows.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, what do, what would people, who would like to do what?
All three need to be separate?
No, you can just do a motion to approve the three projects as stated, with the total amount of $270,000.
Yeah, what's that amount?
$560,000.
$270,000. Yeah. To what?
$275,662.
Is this half the summer, or are you going to do this during the break, April break?
All summer.
All summer. I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Okay. That's it? Yeah. Let's see, so privilege of the floor.
Yeah, perfect. I do have something to say, of course, always. I went on an overseas trip when I was in high school, so I appreciate that the board approved that trip because I had a great time when I was overseas, so thank you for supporting students going overseas. Secondly, we have an electrical program here for, in the tech school. Yes or no?
No. No, the kids go, they do apprenticeships outside the school area.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just was curious if you had reached out to the people that they do apprenticeships with to see if the students that need those hours could come in and help with the installation of the electrical panel, which is really, might be a good learning opportunity for the students.
So we, so we have, like with the CTE renovations, they had a couple of our alumni there working, so we requested that those kids be on-site. That was Jiggy or Electric a while ago, so we just have to see who's working where and who gets it for business, so. We always request if somebody is...
Anytime you can include a student in that program, that's really important. And the fact that we have a tech school here is just fantastic, so it's always important. And I'm sad that the social media event that's happening next week is on the same night as my school board meeting, so I, that bums me out because I'm going to miss it. And it would've been nice to communicate with the elementary school, to say, hey, we're thinking of having this program, there's a lot of parents that would benefit from it, what are your dates? So just a thought going forward that if you have another, because I know it's a discussion at both schools, so it would've been nice to have the coordination between the two, but that's all.
Would that be good, yeah?
That's all I have to say.
Yeah, it might be, I might be able to livestream that and record it so you can see the recording.
Yeah. If that, if that could happen, that would be really official.
Okay.
Jason?
Where's the overnight, or where's the overseas trip going?
France.
Good question. Hey, Anne. You're welcome.
Here. Not me, it's only...
Okay, great. Just saying hi. Saw you sneak in there. All right, consent items, those are being passed around. Board member concerns, anyone have any additional questions? Comments? Okay, and I just need a motion to go into non-public and stated for what?
For a lot of personnel.
Make the motion that we go into...
Make the motion that we go into non-public session for personnel.
Great, seconded by Sheila. I'm going to do roll call. Sheila, Tony.